Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm on the meeting's order and before we begin, I will ask the town manager if you please announce the protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town YouTube. We ask that those attending over Zoom keep the cameras off and microphones muted if they are not involved in the discussion, and to use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. For those in person, please speak audibly toward the handy microphones. Before you make your comments, please state your name, industry that you live on for record-keeping purposes. I ask that those in the room remain quiet unless they are involved in the discussion. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the Zoom and send a new link via email. I now turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So our first item is consideration of the agenda as presented as their motion.
I have like a motion to not consider it. So do I do that now?
All right, to to remove the speed-hump policy?
Well, so you you can you can you can amend the um you can make a motion to amend the agenda, taking out the um
The two reports.
Whatever item number it is.
Okay, can I amend the agenda to remove item?
So you're moving you're moving approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, but to remove item ten, which is the introduction of a resolution to adopt a speed-hump policy because um the Public Safety Committee would like a little.
You have to explain. Is there a second for them?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Thank you, excellent. Uh, now we will turn to our public comment period. If anyone in the room has a comment or if anybody else taken. Okay, thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Someone?
I heard you guys remember the more first and I heard second. And the president. Is there discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Uh, all this first thing. So the next item is a public hearing consideration of the variance application submitted by Agnes Holland and Matthew Brohowsky Brohowsky for the property located at forty-seven twenty-two Cumberland Avenue. And so we will begin, and I would like to note that our our town attorney is available on Zoom tonight, and there he is. Good evening, and then make sure.
Good evening.
Okay, good evening. Today's November four, twenty twenty-four. This is a hearing before the town of Somerset Council for the variance application submitted by Agnes Holland and Matthew Brohowsky to consider six variances. First, a variance of fifty-four feet for a front open porch addition on the existing landing. Second, a variance of forty-seven point one feet for the replacement of the existing mansard roof with a gable roof on the east side addition. Third, a variance of nine feet for a sunroom expansion at the rear. Four, a variance of three feet for a deck addition at the rear. Five, a variance of twenty-one feet for a second-story addition at the rear. And six, a variance of twenty-one feet for a two-story addition with a basement at the rear. We ask that residents be limited to one comment each and that they be limited to two minutes at a time. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, a buzzer will sound and you'll be asked to please finish your thought. If you wish to speak on Zoom, the town manager will call on residents by listed name or the last four digits of the phone number if no names provided. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present the findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application. Third, the county the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application in here. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of Somerset staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as previously stated, this is a variance application for six different variances, all having to do with the established building line. Uh, as the mayor covered, the exact proportions, but kind of go into more detail. The first variance is to construct a roof over the existing front front stoop in front of the house. The second variance is to replace the existing roof on the left side of the house with a new garbled roof. Then the third variance is to construct a six-foot-deep addition at the rear of the existing sunroom at the rear of the existing house. The fourth is to construct a four-foot-wide deck at the rear of the proposed sunroom addition. The fifth variance is to add a four-point-five-foot-deep second story onto the first story at the rear of the existing house. And the sixth variance is to construct a new two-story addition at the right rear of the existing house. That's kind of the uh higher review, but then I'll turn it over to our building administrator Doug to go into a bit more detail. Uh, Doug, can are you are you there?
Uh, good evening. Uh, first of all, that the applicants have not filed a building permit application with Montgomery County or with the town. So this review is just for the variance itself. Uh, the property is located on the south side of Cumberland Avenue between Warwick Place and Surrey Street. There are five lots located between Warwick and Surrey. The applicant's lot is not included in the established building line analysis. The code also does not include the two corner lots that are located at Cumberland and Warwick and Cumberland and Surrey. That leaves two remaining lots on Cumberland Avenue. At forty-seven twelve Cumberland, that house is set back seventy-three point six feet from the front building line on Cumberland. And at forty-seven eighteen, that house is set back seventy-seven point two feet from the front building line at Cumberland. Those two houses equate to a established building line at forty-seven twenty-two of seventy-five point four feet. Uh, it's important to note that the entire house at forty-seven twenty-two is within uh the established building line, and that's why they need six variances to make these additions. Uh, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Uh, the last staff comment I will make at this moment is that our arborist has submitted a tree protection plan. Uh, there is no tree removal plan uh or tree removal permit as there are. Uh, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So before we have the applicant uh speak, uh, Mr. Town Attorney, did you wish to add anything?
Nothing to add. But I will correct something I noted in my report. I had thought an increase of impervious surface coverage over one hundred fifty square feet was proposed based on the additions in the rear. But the town manager has explained that the increased or expanded sunroom projects over existing patio area. So the square footage of that addition is not included in the calculation of new impervious surface coverage. So when that's taken out, they are under the one hundred fifty-square-foot threshold requiring a water drainage plan. I had noted in my report to the council that I thought a stormwater drainage plan would be required. I didn't realize this sunroom was being extended over an existing patio. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now we will invite the applicant or representative to come well, we're to our beautiful lectern and and you can briefly present the application. You can comment or whatever you would like, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Share. Uh, I'm the designer working.
I think there's a chance of speaking today.
Sorry.
Is it working? You have to kind of hold it pretty close. Thank you so much.
Okay, good evening again. And my name is Tanya Share. I'm the designer working with homeowners on their renovation and addition value. With me here tonight, Agnes Holland and also Ethan Landis, the principal at Landis Architects Brothers. And we're here to answer any questions you may have. We have provided you with a number of documents, and the main one is the survey that shows the location of the established building line or the VDL, which is the issue at hand. And also the schematic design that shows the work that we'd like to do. And then the letter of our justification where we explain how we believe that the six variants that need the criteria of good work based on the sample. We appreciate Mr. Landis' presentation tonight and his uh report and this detailed state of the variances, and I believe the patch report and the documents we provided pretty much cover everything related to the uh to this application. We only have two points that we'd like to highlight here. Number one, and this is something that we'd like the council to take into account when we are evaluating the variances. Number one is that we have unusual conditions where the established building line, a line that typically serves as a front set plan restriction line, is based on the survey placed behind the house. So that made the whole house non-controlling. And therefore made it difficult for any proposed addition to comply with that requirement because the whole house is already non-controlling. The second point is that the schematic design and the elements included in the scope of what they're all small in size and scale. And with their size and scale and proportion to the house, they would have no negative impact on the land, air, privacy, and value of neighboring properties. With these two points in mind, we respectfully ask the council to grant homeowners these variances so we can pursue the renovation.
Thank you very much. And you could stay there because when you ask questions, then it will be seen on Zoom. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Uh, this is one that is only of interest to me. Uh, in making the deck, are you making a permeable material or impermeable material?
So typically, the decking material is spread on.
Permeable.
So it's decking material, so it's not going to be solid. It's not made of any uh flat stone material or anything that you can have. It's going to be decking material, so it is.
All right, thank you very much. That's it.
Council members, Serco, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I'm trying to understand this square footage question that our attorney brought up. So when I look at the drawings, I see the extension of the sunroom foundation and the addition on the basement for the first and second floors, which seems to be more than one hundred fifty square feet. Can you explain what?
Yes, I think also the law can explain that part because actually the increase in the impervious surface and not the addition itself. But you are right, the addition of the the three-story additions of I think approximately on approximately a hundred square feet, and then the sample about seventy or sixty, so it is a hundred sixteen in terms of this square footage, but not the increasing impervious surface. But that's why I'm generally this.
Because there's already concrete patio or something. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
That's our hella different question.
I guess what I was wondering is your all the massing that's going to come from this addition is in the backyard. So I was wondering how much how much of the backyard is left from the end of the the patio that you're creating to the fence line?
So I probably have that with me. I believe so. We have a pretty long uh lot, and I think
You mean a deep lot?
It's a long area. Yeah, correct. So it's about approximately nineteen feet from the end of the addition for the rear property. And we have pretty much a lot of space out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, no questions. Answer, I'm right back.
Um, so the variance of like the forty-seven feet for the replacement of the existing roof or the gable roof on the east side addition. So that, if I'm like seeing it where, I mean, that's just a replacement of a roof, right?
That is correct. So there is an existing addition. So there is an existing second floor, but it has a dimension. And we'd like to replace the magnitude with completely the size of that second story will not change. So the reason why we were asked to include that as part of the variance is because it's a different type of roof. But it's not an increase in anything in terms of this square footage or the second story.
Do you know why um it matters that it's a different kind of roof?
Yeah, so this is, I think the house was built in nineteen sixty, I could know sixty, yes, and the addition is at an intermediate stage. And somebody took that, you know, decision of, you know, going with a magnitude. We don't believe that this roof actually goes with the simple architecture and the economic revival architecture of the house and the simple massing. We'd like to go back to the people who just give the way it was much more simple. The other thing is that this ceiling roof is also in needs a lot of repair. So if you're planning that, we'd like just to make the house type, to make it more nicer and more compatible.
Yeah, okay. So because I think I know the house and is there a garage underneath that? And that stays?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, has any resident indicated they would just be? I don't know. So at this point, um I will um the public comment period is now closed, and I will turn it over to our council president to lead the deliberation and final decision.
All right, um, so anybody got any comments to start? Who's this?
I have a question. And I guess so they have a very deep backyard. So when somebody has a big lot, why is it an issue in terms of expanding backwards? You know, um you know, that's what I I don't understand.
But it it it's it's only an issue because the established building line is um up from the front is seventy-five feet, which covers the whole house. Um, because the whole house, in fact, it starts about twenty-five feet from the street. And therefore, they have the variance for everything they're doing because the whole house is outside the established building line. That that that's why it's here.
What an original build would have put the house further in in the lot. That would have been further back.
Yeah.
Then it would have been all conforming, but it's further up.
I think it's actually more that it's a smaller lot than the two homes that are um west of it.
But if they put the house further back, that would make this more an issue in terms of the expansion, am I right?
Well, it wouldn't have been an option.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just don't really understand. These variances seem like very big, like a, I don't understand. I still don't understand the roof, but thank you for your explanation. But um it's my fault, not your explanation. I like, I'm not sure why why that's needed a variance.
Well, you could ask. It's because it's outside the established building line. I mean, it.
It's just because the house is already non-conforming, and so it's just anything they do to it needs a variance.
Do you you want to, you can ask the town attorney.
Is that right, Ron?
Yeah, that's right. EJ, do you have? If if it would help, we could put up the MC Atlas map that I attached to my memo.
Yeah. But I maybe it's time for me to say something, which is sometimes the law is a mess. Sometimes, in this case, the law is a mess. Um, and and what I'm trying to say here is that when people originally make law, they don't consider all the circumstances in which the law is going to be applied, and some of those circumstances in fact make the law look ridiculous.
And that's why we have the variance process.
I right, I was going to say the way we get out of it is through a variance process.
Which is a good law, not.
Right, and 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 if you go there, you'll notice, yes, the two homes which are included in the established building line calculation are indeed seventy-five feet, seventy-seven feet back. They are in huge lots. And therefore that gives you that number, but every other home around there, the ones across the street, the one next door on the other side, every other home around there are in fact at that twenty-five feet threshold, but they're not included in the established line.
What would happen if they tore it down and had to rebuild?
Well, the established building line would be the same.
Would be the same.
EJ, do you can you put up the the other one that shows the outline of the buildings?
I found page seventeen in the packet also very useful.
Yep. Hmm, just to speak.
Oh, there's that patio on those pictures.
Yes.
An established building line is seventy.
There you go. So the the applicant's lot is the one with the dot in the center of the house that's highlighted yellow. And the front setback is either the greater of twenty-five feet or the established building line, whichever is greater. You calculate the established building line by looking at the location of the houses on adjoining lots up and down the street, three hundred feet, but you don't count corner lots. So as Doug explained, to calculate the established building line front setback for this lot, we're looking only at the two very large lots to the east. Those two houses are set back from the front of the property line seventy-three feet and seventy-seven feet. So we average those two to come up with the established building line front setback for the applicant's lot. And that's why it's so big. It's seventy-five point four feet. Because the only two lots we're using to calculate the established building line are these two very large lots. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Hmm. So, you know, when when we do that calculation and come up with seventy-five point four, we draw that established building line on the applicant's lot, and you see their existing house is completely in front of the front setback. So the whole house already encroaches into the required front setback. So anything they do to their house requires a front setback variance.
Got it.
So um as I said, sometimes laws and ass, and this is the case where the variance process gets us out of that problem. And so I do believe we should approve the variances.
So would you would you like to make a motion?
Can I ask a question before you do that? Do we normally approve a variance before we get a permit? Before we have a permit?
That's not the town attorney.
Yes, yes, because we we can't grant a permit until the project is approved, and this project can't be approved until a variance is granted. So we'll we'll sometimes combine the hearings into one. But, you know, I think this applicant understandably wanted to know whether the variance was going to be possible before completing all their plans and going to the county for the county permit. So this one will have to be done in steps, but yeah, step one is to determine whether the variance would be granted.
Okay, so, Mr. President, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I moved approval of the six variances requested by.
Yeah.
Is there discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? All right, all those of us. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for understanding the process. The next item is the building administrator's report. Sir Lo Meyer.
Uh, at the forty-nine oh six Fallstone, uh, the council approved the building permit on September ninth. The building permit was issued on September twentieth, and they have begun construction on this green porch at the back of the house. Uh, and in the next couple of months, I imagine, uh, before the first of the year, we'll receive two new building permits for a demo and new houses at forty-seven fourteen Essex and forty-seven twelve Fallstone. And also, I anticipate that we will receive building permits for additions at forty-seven twenty-two Cumberland, fifty-four hundred Trent and fifty-four, uh fifty-five twenty Trent. And that concludes my report.
I have a question. Thank you, council, president. Bar, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Council or Serco?
I have two questions. One, forty-eight fifteen Cumberland. There were some questions or issues about the driveway being larger than and and the process of the construction of the driveway not being in accordance with the variance approved by the council. I thought that has there been a stop work placed on that? What's the status?
So so I can answer that is uh first, the because of the majority of the council has assented, there will be a special hearing to review for variance. A stop work order has actually not been issued just because construction has already been completed. Uh, so uh, there is a, it would be ineffective.
Right.
But yes.
And and the hearings will be here on November eighteenth, right before the work session.
Okay. So the work is complete, but does the town sign off on the completion of the project? Or do we have any say in any more than what happens?
Well, uh, so basically, the hearing will be to review if they met the requirements of the variance. And so the council will decide the council basically decided they uh complied with the variance or they actually went against it.
Okay, thank you.
Did did the town attorney want to add anything to that?
That was great, though.
Well, with the the property being marketed, I think it probably is still a good idea to issue a notice of violation. That would be something that the seller would have to identify to prospective purchasers, because we would not be in a position of enforcement, a good position for enforcement after a sale has taken place. So although the work's complete, I would still recommend a notice of violation be issued.
Which is slightly different from a stop work.
Yep.
Okay, so 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 thank you for that question and
And I have one other.
The town manager will issue that and he will let you all know if he doesn't.
Yeah.
Fifty-five fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey Street. I noticed today that there's a large fence going up all around the back and side yard of that property. I mean, and I don't recall that large fence. I mean, it's on the property line. It looks like it's a big fence. Doesn't that need to be permitted? And I'm just, were we aware that there was a fence going up at fifty-five twenty-nine along the property line?
Okay.
I I think I can answer that or try to anyways. Uh, the there's an existing fence that was built behind the house on Fallstone that does not comply with the town code. It's too tall. The app, the property owners have been uh informed that they have to redo the fence to lower it to comply with the code because of its location adjacent to Surrey Street. Uh, so I'm not sure whether the construction going on today is they're revising that fence or the property owner at fifty-nine twenty-nine also has a permit to install a fence adjacent to the new fence on Fallstone. So tomorrow I'll look into it uh to see which contractor is working on that fence.
Um, thank you very much. I and I'll say the question. I noticed that um there appear to be like a concrete patio in the rear of the house. Was that pre-existing or is that part of the deck-type construction that they're doing in the rear? No, I'm just.
Part of the building from an applicant. Part of the building from an application was to install a patio at the back of the house.
Okay, so it was all. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, and we'll make sure that when the information is obtained.
That's fine.
When I looked at the report, you know, about fifty-eight oh eight Surrey Street, I went in the directory and I can't find fifty-eight oh eight Surrey Street. Is there a fifty-eight oh eight Surrey Street?
There's fifty.
Was that a typo?
No. All right, can I explain that one?
Yeah.
Uh, that's the house that's according to tax records is their address. But in our address system, their address is off Surrey Street. It's that big house right there at the near Surrey and uh Borset.
I know the one you're talking about. Oh, yeah.
So her her address in the town is on Surrey.
But what's the what's the what's the other address?
Oh, on Dorset.
Yes, the big one.
Yeah, it's um Maya's house.
My row.
I don't even know. I don't know.
My row, the six lots.
My own well.
Yes, it's a huge.
It's huge.
Huge lot.
Okay, did you have questions?
Straight on Dorset.
Just for the numbers. Take your time.
I guess when I looked at that, I wondered, you know, about building on a detached ADU unit, but we is that is that kosher? I mean, do we do that?
This is, oh, yeah.
In the code?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is my first, so thank you.
Well, maybe Ron can explain that or or Doug. Can you elaborate on that question that ADUs?
Yes, let me find that provision, Mr. Mayor.
And then also, could you also elaborate on the fact that the county changed the law? not that long ago to make it easier to obtain an ADU, a law that we oppose?
Sure, so, yeah, it was maybe two or three years ago, the county council first adopted a law to tax the income being generated from short-term rentals. And the county council explained that Airbnb and similar type uses were already happening across the county, and they weren't being prohibited through enforcement. So the county council elected to legalize them and tax them instead of enforcing the current rules. They were previously deemed a hotel use. Transient lease, something under thirty days, was previously deemed a hotel use and not permitted by zoning. But the county passed a zoning tax amendment to authorize the short-term rentals and to provide tax laws for the income generated from those uses.
But the short-term rental, we opted out of.
So, yeah, and at the time, as the mayor noted, many municipalities opposed the initiative, and the then legislative attorney, Jeff Zients, wrote in a memo to the county council that municipalities could effectively opt out of the new law by opting out of the licensing framework required for ADUs. So an ADU operator must have a landlord's license. And Mr. Zients offered the opinion that municipality could exempt itself from the licensing provisions in chapter fifty-four, and therefore render these uses impossible because they require a landlord license. And if the license is not available, then the operation can't be undertaken. Is that what you mean, Mr. Mayor?
No, well, yes, thank you for that, because you know we have some illegally operating Airbnbs in the town that we're trying to get the county to enforce. But what I was also, what I was also asking about was the, when then-council member Hans Reimer had some legislation that passed that made it easier as a matter of right for, uh, property owners to add a ADU. Remember, there used to be these more stringent rules? Do you remember that?
I don't remember that, Mr. Mayor, I just remember the ones on the text.
Doesn't Council President Bar?
Uh, he, he does only remember that vaguely, it's not enough.
To answer your excellent question, Counselor Heller, we will get that information.
And I, I could tell you, Mr. Mayor, if it helps, in another jurisdiction, an ADU being operated for the purposes of filming a movie, and that town reported it to the Department of Housing and Community Affairs, who's responsible for the licensing at the county, and the county shut it down. And we sent in a letter to the DHCA stating that the town had exempted itself from the licensing provisions and therefore that use was operating in violation of county law. So the town might consider sending in a, sending in a similar letter. That was a couple of years ago. And at that time, the DHCA was maintaining a database, a table reflecting which municipalities were in and which were out, so might be worth checking to see if that table still.
Thank you so much for that. The one thing that I'll add is, um, right after the new law was passed to make it easier, then two new ADUs were created in town, one next door to me.
Right, okay.
On Warwick and one on Dorset.
But is it normal that it's okay to build a second, like, dwelling?
Yeah.
So can I put a dwelling in my backyard?
No. Let's say, let's let the town attorney explain.
Yes, there, there are two different types of ADUs. ADUs can be detached, so they can be freestanding in the rear yard, or they can be attached in part of the house. So you could set up an ADU on your second store, or on your second floor, or you could put it in your garage, or you could build a freestanding building that just serves as the ADU.
What about parking? Is there any parking?
Yeah, so under, under the county law, as I recall, and it's been a while since I looked at it, an ADU requires one onsite parking space. But you, if there's a driveway, that can be considered as the, the parking space for the ADU.
The, the law was made, the law was changed. It's similar to what we're fighting right now with the single bound zoning. The thought was that by relaxing the requirements for an ADU, that all this attainable housing would be created. And in our town, the two properties that were created, there's a unit on Dorset that rents for around five thousand a month or something. And the same next door to me. So, and I'm not trying to disparage those people, but that was not the, the goal of the legislation.
Wasn't the spirit of the law.
Right, but it, but it used to be that the, that the neighbors on the block, that a public hearing was required. But, but now it's not anymore, it's just a lot easier, so. And that's, it's a lot easier, and that's why some of our citizens opted to create them, because it was, made it easy.
But how would it be, you know, how could you just put another dwelling, let's say, in my backyard? In terms of lot lines and things like that?
You might not have a space, but, but the Surrey Street is huge.
Attorney, can you please answer these excellent questions? We're lucky we have such knowledge from town attorney.
Yes, so, I mean, what some neighboring jurisdictions did, they adopted special setback rules for detached accessory dwelling units. So if someone were to build a second home in their rear yard, the law would say, even though this is an accessory dwelling, like a garage, because it's operating as a dwelling, the same setbacks apply as applied to the main dwelling. So it would still require a front setback, like a main dwelling, side setbacks, etc. So it would have setbacks that are same as the, the main house. So.
So, rather than, so, rather than belabor this, which is excellent, I think that we should have a, a work session item in the future, because we might want to arm ourselves for this possibility that you brought up, Counselor Heller, so thank you.
But, yeah, but that I would see.
Go ahead.
Well, let me, let me find, trying to refresh my recollection as to how Somerset handled this issue. We'll go back and find that ADU ordinance. So we did adopt.
We did amend our code for ADUs, and we added a parking place, basically, and for Somerset. Um, and the setbacks are the setbacks of any building, like, you know, a hut in the backyard is the same setback required for an ADU in our code.
But you have to get a permit.
Yeah, well. There we go, yep. Resolution twelve twenty-one one, we adopted it in March of twenty twenty-two.
You voted on it. Okay, well, thank you. Did you have any more, do you have more questions?
No, I don't.
Counselor Kumar.
No questions.
Counselor Ravak.
Um, so forty-seven twelve Fallstone is already, like, being marketed for in the MLS with, like, a house, um, on it that is large. Are they allowed to do that?
Counsel, Mr. Town Attorney.
I'm sorry, I'm still reading the ADU ordinance.
So on, um,
That question.
On forty-seven twelve Fallstone is listed for sale on the MLS with pictures and diagrams of, um, what the house would look like um, and plans, but they don't have, they don't have a plan. Um,
They don't have an approved one.
They don't have an approved permit and plan. Are they allowed to put that on the MLS?
Well, yes, but I think to, to avoid false advertising, they would need to disclaim the fact that approval's not yet been obtained. I imagine they would not want to sign a contract without notifying their buyer that that the plans haven't been approved yet by the town. But I can't think of any law prohibiting the posting of a prospective plan.
Okay, so, I'm glad you brought this up, Counselor Ravak, because this is why we are, uh, the staff is working on a document that we would, uh, give to, uh, sellers so that they know, so that they're aware of these kind of things. So thank you for bringing that up.
It's one of those very attainable houses.
Yes.
Okay, do you have any, do you have any other questions, Counselor?
No.
Okay, but thank you both of you for these great ideas. Okay, the next item is public hearing, consideration of removal of the public tree at forty-seven oh-eight Dorset Avenue, Mr. Dr. Feather. Good evening.
Good. Um, the tree is a log, twenty-four inches in diameter. And you can see from the picture, the center of the trunk is broad. So we want to take it down and put another one.
Thank you. Counsel, President Bar, do you have any question?
No, I have no questions. It's obviously.
Counselor Member Circo. No questions. Counselor Member Heller.
No question.
Counselor Kumar, no question. Counselor Ravak.
No questions.
Has any resident, uh, council prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve removal of the public tree at forty-seven oh-eight Dorset Avenue because of its precarious health.
I heard, Counselor Kumar, is there discussion, hearing not all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us, thank you. Thank you, sir. You. The next item is to consider the introduction of a resolution to adopt a contributions, donations, and gifts policy. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As has been discussed at previous work sessions, this is a comprehensive update of our quite updated donations, contributions, and gifts policy that covers incoming as well as outgoing donations, contributions, and gifts. Um, everything from potential gifted trees to monetary gifts and donations to the town or whatever, but thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, President Bar, do you have any questions?
No, this looks, I mean, well done, this was actually quite comprehensive work to put it all together, so thank you.
Counselor Circo, do you have any question?
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Heller.
No questions.
Counselor Kumar.
Just one question. We are taking on the placement of plants of, in an approval period here for plastic, the town owner will order your plaque. Do we want to take that off?
That was in the old policy, and I, and the reason is, the reason is, is because, uh, if we're the ones ordering it, we can make sure it matches the aesthetic of the town, we can do, we, we already have a, a kind of plaque guy, I guess you could say, and so.
But does that mean we pay for it?
Oh, no, uh, they have to pay for it.
Okay, okay, fine.
We just order it for them.
Okay, I understand, I understand. All right, sounds good. But you'll also be able to amend it.
Yeah, I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ravak, do you have any questions? Counselor Ravak, do you have any questions?
No. Oh, sorry.
It's okay. And then you do your research. Uh, council, you prepared to make a motion of introduction?
Motion to introduce a resolution to adopt a contributions, donations, and gifts policy.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Is there discussion, hearing not all of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, um, as you know, we always like the Supreme Court, we assign an article, we assign an article. So who are you, you're gonna write?
I can write. I can write all the articles.
Okay, yeah. Did anybody else want to write it? The next item is to consider the introduction of a resolution to adopt an overgrown vegetation management policy, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also previously been discussed, the work session, this has come out, uh, from the recommendations made by the pedestrian safety working group. Uh, as I, as I said at the work session, we already have the authority and, uh, ability to enforce overgrown vegetation in the public right of way. However, we don't have a standardized process, uh, and so that's what this uh, policy aims to accomplish, is to make very clear what our standards are as well as what the process is for enforcing those standards.
Thank you, Counsel, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Uh, while we discuss the work session, I, I have no questions.
Thank you, Counselor Member Circo.
Well, I'm, I'm very happy to go ahead with the introduction, but I do have a question about the clearance of the sidewalks. There's a comment from Kumar Viswani about Public Safety Committee, and he noted that some of our sidewalks are wider than thirty-six inches, but the way this is written, we would be allowing some overgrowth over part of the sidewalk.
Well, 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 that's a good, that's a good observation for the town attorney to review. Remember, the town attorney reviews all of this. So, Mr. Town Attorney, before it's considered, will you please review that comment?
So, that, it would be, under the current policy as written, it would be okay for vegetation, vegetation to overhang somewhat, as long as there was still thirty-six inches of clearance on the sidewalk. That, that's how it's currently written, so if we want to do something else, we certainly rewrite it.
Well, that, well, why don't you work with the town manager and the, um, chair of the committee to see if you can come up with something that satisfies and for your introduction. I don't, we don't need to do it tonight, but.
Okay.
I think it's, this is pretty simple. There should be no vegetation over the sidewalk, no matter how wide the sidewalk is.
So right now, what's before you is what's in writing there.
And I could, and I could tell you, Mr. Mayor, where this, this came from the town of Chevy Chase, where town staff had found that a little more leniency appeared appropriate, because with a, you know, absolutely no overhang rule or other stringent rule, enforcement might be overly burdensome where there's still enough clearance for the ADA. So in that town, they decided to abandon the no obstruction rule and adopt something a little more lenient, which, which would say, you can have an overhanging trees from here or there, and we're not going to go out and cut the sidewalks every day as long as significant, sufficient clearance remains for ADA passage. Okay, I could certainly work with the committee to refine.
So, once we run through the questions, you might decide that this introduction should be delayed. So did you have any more questions?
No, just concern.
Okay, okay, fine. So when you discuss the, Counselor Kumar, do you have any question?
I had a similar question, that was just three feet, but I'm fine with introducing it and then resolving it. The other question I had, and I think I was not at that work session, so apologize for bringing this up now, but the, the cost, the, the fees we will impose, uh, EJ, we have not determined those. In one case, when it's public right of way, we are saying we may decide to put that cost or removal under the homeowner. And then in another case, we, the one when it's on private property, we are saying we will fines may be imposed, but we haven't determined the amount. Do we feel we need to define that?
Um, I would recommend putting that in the town's fee schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, so that way, we don't have to update the policy every time I want to change it. So if this policy was passed, then in the next work session, we could discuss.
But we don't have it currently, I'm assuming. Okay, okay. And we would want it consistent?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
One more, one more, sorry.
Go for it.
Ten to thirty days, that's so that you can issue warnings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you think, Counselor Ravak, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
So, counsel, are you prepared to introduce this tonight, or?
I think we should.
Because I know the, I know that the, uh, the chair really wants us to do so. Is there a motion to introduce it?
So, I'll, I'll move that we, council introduced the resolution to adopt an overgrown vegetation management policy.
Second, okay, so discussion?
Yes.
Hearing not all of us. Oh, discussion, go ahead.
Stand up.
Um, I, I just want to weigh in to say that I think if we have a sidewalk of any width, there should be no vegetation growing. of any width, there should be no vegetation growing into it. You know, parents walk with strollers and little children, they hold their hands, and if one sees a sidewalk and they use the width of it. And I think our policy has to say no vegetation hanging over the sidewalk, no matter what the, no matter how wide it is. And we can decide how strict we want to be, but I think we need, that needs to be in our policy.
I agree with you. And either way, the three feet seems very.
It's not a lot.
Well, you, why don't you be thinking about all this when, and when you, when it's considered?
Okay.
You can debate, you can debate.
Okay.
But, but.
I'm fine with introducing it.
Okay, is there further discussion?
I, I'll just raise the point that I think this clause covers it, just want to make sure it covers that. We have cases of trees blocking road signs, trees blocking stop signs. Do you think this policy covers that?
This has to be, certainly. Did you hear the question?
Is whether the policy addresses trees that block signs?
Correct. I think it does. I'm just trying to make sure that you read it as doing that.
Well, if not, you, you're requesting it to be added.
Yeah, I, yeah, it could be made express. It's not expressly addressed.
What I would suggest is that you add all these excellent suggestions so that it can be debated. Okay, so further discussion of the introduction? Hearing none, all this in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is to consider the introduction of a resolution to adopt a town hall rental policy, Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was discussed in the last work session, this is a modernization of the current rules that are in place for the renewal of town hall. Primarily updates have been made in response to what the town hall staff, as in me, the deputy town manager and the town clerk have seen in practice due to rental process. Uh, it doesn't necessarily add anything that isn't already, uh, in practice. It's more of just expressly putting things in the policy instead of things that were previously applied. Haven't answered any questions about it.
Council President Bar, any questions?
No, I'll just say so that everybody knows, this, this policy has the town manager and the mayor making decisions on whether to agree to rent the space. The council's role is as an appeal process. If something's gone wrong, then we are the appeal body. That's how it's set up.
Thank you for pointing that out. Council, President, Member Serka, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Councilor Roback.
No questions.
Are you prepared to make a motion, council?
I move that we introduce a resolution to adopt town hall rental policy.
Is there a second? Second, so Serka first. Is there discussion, hearing none, all this in favor? Okay, thank you. And our last item, to consider the introduction of a charter amendment to generalize the requirement for an annual audit, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, as previously discussed, this is a charter amendment.
Sorry, no, I just realized the speed hub was taken off, so, sorry.
Okay. Um, anyway, so it changes the section of the town charter that manages our audits. Primary and secondary reason for this, primary reason is to allow for the council to sunset the audit committee, which would follow alongside the other changes made tonight around the committee side of the budgeting process, as well as make it easier for the council via resolution to update the audit process if there ever is a want or desire to. Uh, Ron commented on this as well, but the language was, is, is similar language used in other towns, including other local municipalities, such as the Village of Markins additions and Chevy Chase section thirty.
And I want to thank our town manager for doing all this tremendous research and all this. Council, so President Bar, do you have any question?
Right, so what would be our process, EJ, in your mind to arrange an audit of the towns' books?
So, to make sure I'm understanding your question, what would be the?
So, I mean, we have, we have, we hire an auditor.
Well, I mean, the, the, it's the council's role to approve the, approve the audit process. And so we need to know from you how you are identifying an auditor for us to approve.
So, uh, I could bring to the next work session the current, a rundown of the current process and then have the council discuss the current process and see if they are, if the council is okay with it, and then we could formalize that via resolution or policy after the charter amendment is potentially passed. Uh, or the council can make questions or suggestions and change those needed.
So, so let me just say, Mr. President, that the, the hiring of the auditors covered, and all of the town attorney validated this, it's under our procurement policy. So that's, that's how it is now, but, but, so we can discuss at a work session if we want to put in something more specific about that. But, but the reason why the town manager has made this proposal, because this is the best practice in.
No, I understand that, I know.
But we can, we can, your question is excellent.
Process in the future.
Well, you're, 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 we'll talk about that at a work session.
All right.
In, for the need, so. But, but thank you for that. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Serka, do you have any question?
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar.
Just a statement to clarify, building on what Robin said, what this is doing is removing the mention of audit committee.
Correct.
That's all it's doing, but the process now is not defined.
Exactly, that's what.
I, I think the implication is that the newly constituted finance, revenue, and budget committee will play some role, but I think that process is, is, is not.
Discuss it at a work session, seems.
But, but, but in any case, but in any case, the, the audit is always historically, we've, the council has approved.
Exactly. Everything will likely stay the same other than the audit committee.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Councilor Roback, do you have any questions?
No.
Council, you prepared to introduce the resolution, the, the charter amendment?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just say quickly to Kabir's point, the annual audit is required by state law. So we have to use a specific process under that state law. So yes, indeed, nothing's going to change other than removing the requirement to also have a citizens committee doing a separate audit.
Right, but, but to their point, we can incorporate that in our code. That's a possibility.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
But the other thing, before they vote, I, I do want you to, to elaborate, clarify the difference between introducing a resolution and introducing a charter amendment, what the requirements are for that.
Sure, so charter amendments are adopted pursuant to state law. State law requires we introduce at one meeting, have a hearing at least twenty days later where the public's invited to come in and give us comments. We have to publish the charter amendment once in a newspaper of general circulation. We have to mail a postcard or newsletter with a summary to every household in the community. And we have to allow the opportunity for residents to send the measure to referendum if they don't like it. A petition signed by twenty-five percent of the qualified voters can trigger that referendum election. If that doesn't happen, then the charter amendment becomes effective fifty days after adoption. And we file a copy of it with the, with the state and update our, our charter through our co-publisher.
Thank you for that highly educational answer.
What, what, what's the current law on a newspaper of general circulation?
So it means one that's offered for sale.
Instagram.
We can use the Jewish, we. Okay. All right.
All right. Motion to introduce charter amendment to generalize the requirement for an annual audit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Happy voting, everybody.
Yes, already voted.